Good evening and welcome to the Red Clay Consolidated School District Regular Board Meeting for July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, to ensure we have quorum, Ms. Stevens, could you please call attendance? Actually, we're gonna move to the pledge. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ms. Englishwin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the republic of religion.
We just stand one nation under God. And if there's justice for all.
We now move to roll call. Ms. Stevens, could you please take roll call?
Ms. Englishwin?
Here.
Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Matthews?
Here.
Five, by present.
We have quorum. Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. We now move on to the Oath of Office for the Board of Education.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Matthews, members of the board, members of the community staff. At this time, I would like to have our board member-elect, Susan Sanders, please come up to the podium. Ms. Sanders is our new board member-elect and here to establish and take her oath of office uh for the Board of Education. So at this time, um, Ms. Sanders, if you please don't mind reading your oath, and if you can raise your right hand.
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Delaware, and the laws of the Delaware governing public education, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school board member according to the accordingly to the best of my ability, and I do further solemnly affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offer, or promised to pay, contributed, or offered to or promised to contribute any money or other valuable thing as consideration or reward for the giving or withholding of vote at the election at which I was elected to said office. I so affirm.
Congratulations and welcome to the Red Clay Board of Education.
We now move on to the organizational meeting items. First, we have the reorganization of the Board of Education. Excellent.
Today, at each annual meeting, the school board shall elect one of its members as president and another of its members as vice president, who in the absence or disability of the president shall act in its stead. At this time, the floor is open to entertain nominations for president of the Red Clay School Board of Education. Is there a nomination?
Yes, I nominate Jose Matthews.
Yes, I nominate Jose Matthews.
They're second to their nomination.
I'll second my nominee.
A motion has been made that Jose Matthews serves as president of the Red Clay Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Stevens, would you please call the vote?
Ms. Englishwin?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Congratulations, President Matthews.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
At this time, uh, the floor will entertain nominations for vice president of the Red Clay School Board of Education. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Ajay.
Yes.
Second.
A motion has been made that Ms. Ajay Englishwin serve as vice president of the Red Clay School Consolidated School District Board of Education. Are there any other nominations? Ms. Stevens, would you please call the vote?
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Englishwin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Congratulations. And at this point, a motion is needed to appoint the superintendent as the executive secretary of the school board. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Martin Wilson.
Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. Englishwin?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Green.
What a lucky man.
At this time, I now turn the meeting over to President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Green. We now move on to the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school board committee assignment. So we have several committees that need uh board uh members to nominate for. First, we have a board policy review committee. We need two board members to serve in that.
I'd like to serve on that.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Do we have a second board member?
Well, Akisia wanted to, I believe.
Doctor Neesmith. So we have Mr. Leonard and Doctor Neesmith. Is there any objection?
I'll do it, Kathy.
So it looks like on our on our reorg- it's 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 the appointment of two.
It should be three.
And technically, we can have up to three members that doesn't present a form, so I would say we offer the opportunity to have at least three members on each.
I would like to serve.
You would like to serve as well, and so is there any object? I mean, Doctor Neesmith isn't here.
She did indicate that she would um if possible to serve on the CFRC.
CFRC? Okay, so are we comfortable moving forward with Ms. Thompson, Mr. Leonard, and Ms. Sander? For for policy review.
If Akisia really wants it, I'll switch out with her, so I'll talk to her.
Okay. Yep.
So it, I mean, I'll be on.
So for the time being.
Okay.
And then, I mean, we can also put her on CFRC.
Yeah, and I'd like to be on that too, so I'll work it out with her and let and let you know for sure. It'll be either her or me. If she really wants to, I will let her.
So we have Mr. Leonard, Ms. Sanders, and then we'll firm up the third position.
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
Now, I mean, we want to CFRC. Do we have two interested, two or three interested? Is for that one, we can only get two, correct? Do we have anyone else?
I'd like to be on it.
Ms. Thompson?
Miss Neesmith asked or requested to. She did request to be on it, so I'm just appozing the board.
Do you want to have a conversation with her to see?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll firm up Ms. Thompson, and then you'll speak to her about that one as well.
Yes.
Excellent. Moving forward to DSBA, we need two people for the Board of Directors. We need a board member. These meetings are in Dover. Um, and then we need an alternate in the instance in case that the member isn't able to attend, and these meetings are in person. Do we have anyone who's interested in being on the Board of Directors for DSBA?
I will be if nobody else wants to. I'll definitely do it.
Excellent. Do we have an alternate?
I'll be alternate.
I can be an alternate.
Okay.
And for Legislative Committee, um, same situation. They only meet four times a year, though. We need a board member and an alternate. Is anyone interested in serving on?
Yes, Martin Wilson. Martin Wilson.
How about Mr. Wilson? I don't know if he's.
Mr. Wilson?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, all right, yes.
For legislative?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. And do we have an alternate? Any volunteers for alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Moving on to Wilmington Learning Collaborative, we need one board member for Wilmington Learning Collaborative.
I would like to serve.
Like to continue? Excellent. Thank you, Ms. English. And we now move on to CFRC, the Red Clay Education Foundation.
The RCEF.
Thank you, RCEF. Thank you. The uh Education Foundation. We need a board member and an alternate as well.
And actually, well, yes, their bylaws, they stipulate that only one board member serves, so.
Is there any one?
I'll do it if nobody else wants to.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
And I can serve as alternate.
Yeah, they're the eight AM meetings.
They're early. And last but not least, we need three board members to serve on facilities. I know I would be interested in serving on facilities. Do we have two other board members who are interested?
Mr. Wilson?
Mr.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson and and Ms. Sanders. The three people can serve on that committee, so welcome to facility.
Uh, President Matthews, uh, I noticed there was a, the uh parent and student handbook committee is missing on here. We did not vote to sunset that, so where is it? Dr. Green?
Actually, the board did um per the the last meeting um with the approval of this student family handbook, and the committee will meet ad hoc, ad hoc, as needed, because the reality of it is the goal for that committee was to complete the handbook. And obviously, as state policy, state laws and things get changed, there may not be substantive changes, so it's more of an ad hoc, as-needed basis. And that was a part of the presentation that Mr. Pruitt provided to the board last month when the board did approve it, so just.
That wasn't the understanding I had. The understanding I had was we're gonna keep it but have it three or four times a year, and that was it.
So that ad hoc, as-needed would just mean that they would have to pull that group together.
That means it's gonna disappear.
No, we, I mean, we're governed by our family handbook, and again, having, I'm not debating. I mean, it's the board's prerogative what the board wants to do, but I'm just making it clear to the board, but and it was stipulated through the committee on multiple occasions.
I I believe it should still be a work committee, even though we don't meet that often.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, I know that we talked about this when we were sunsetting committees, and I know we talked about it throughout the year. I don't think there's there's no charge and there's no purpose to that committee, so I don't understand why we would create a committee.
It's sorry you created.
No, it was sunsetting.
Who sunsetted? I don't remember that. Did we vote on that?
Not that I'm aware. I mean, I know that the charge was.
We did not vote on that. I'm telling you that right now.
But the committee charge was to complete the handbook. So once the charge has been completed, I think we have to clarify maybe the process.
Yeah, and we talked, we did talk about it at the board retreat last year at the special session. We talked about it even at the uh at the board meetings. We had those discussions.
It was not throughout.
Can I finish, please?
With the other five.
Can I please finish, Mr. Leonard, before you cut in? Um, we we also discussed it at the committee meeting, and everybody understood that the committee was going away, and at best, it was becoming, you know, it was gonna be ad hoc as needed because the work of the committee had been done, which was revising the handbook.
Do we want to appoint anyone to that ad hoc committee?
It's okay with me.
Do we want to have a designated person to serve on the ad hoc committee?
What does ad hoc mean again?
It it means the committee will be convened and meet as needed because the handbook itself has been completed, so to have, there there's no premise moving forward to meet unless, again, state policy changes, board policy changes, or something within code that would force us to change the handbook, and then that would require the group to come back together to convene, to meet as needed.
Okay.
And typically, the handbook is an ongoing, obviously, living, reading the documents, state code, and things change, but again, the whole impetus of that particular committee was to complete the handbook, and the committee did so. And again, last month and in Mr. Pruitt's presentation, the last slide did indicate that upon approval of this, this would be as a sunset and become an ad hoc committee and be as needed.
I do want to be on that committee.
So we'll appoint Mr. Leonard to the ad hoc committee in the instance that a meeting is convened. So that document will be updated and circulated to the board so we're all clear on the assignments. Moving along to approval of the agenda.
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you, Ms. English. To be properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda I've submitted, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We now move on to public comment. Just double check, make sure.
Ms. Yvonne Johnson.
Excellent. And I'll read the rules just for clarification, although I know you need no introduction. The Red Clay School Board appreciates any member of the community who would like to make public comment. According to Board Policy two thousand and six, the Red Clay School Board allocates thirty minutes of public commentary. Each person may have up to three minutes to address the board, and this time may not be transferred to or from another speaker. The board generally does not respond directly to a speaker. The board meeting is not an appropriate place or forum to raise complaints or concerns about individual employees. Upon request, the superintendent shall provide the speaker with the procedures for submitting such complaints or concerns. The order of the speakers is listed on the screen. As you see your name, please make your way to a seat near the podium, or if you are virtual, please unmute when called to respect the time of anyone present tonight. When you speak, please state your name and organization if you were speaking on its behalf, and the topic of your comment. There's a timer on the screen that will turn on when you have one minute left. It will turn on yellow with thirty seconds left and flash in red when your three minutes are over. I will thank you for your comments and call on the next speaker. Let's please begin with Ms. Yvonne Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Ami Von Johnson. Good evening, Dr. Green and school board members. First, I'd like to congratulate Susan Sander on being sworn in this evening to the board. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the safety concerns in our schools. As a longtime resident and Red Clay and a frequent flyer to these school board meetings, I am very concerned about the safety of our students and staff. I have listened to many families pour their hearts out on issues regarding bullying, discipline issues, unsafe routes to schools, and more. Two months ago, I was literally crying in this audience when a dad spoke about the incident with his son at North Star. We need to do more. You need to do more. I understand that there is a vote tonight about forming a safety commita- committee. Over the many years that I've been involved in Red Clay, I have served on numerous committees. I know it formed, if it formed appropriately, they do work. I served on the policy committee for many years. I co-chaired the inclusion committee, and I served on a committee that examined the admissions policies at CAP. All these committees had something in common, the voice of parents and community members. The parent voice is essential on these committees. Regular reporting to the public is vital to its success. I am unsure what is going on, but I also hear that the policy committee is in danger of being eliminated. I hope that is not true because it is literally the job of a school board member to make policy. This should be done with input from families, educators, and community members. I ask you to please vote in favor of the safety committee. Ensure that there is participation from families, students, educators, and the community. You owe this to the families of Red Clay. Please do better. Building family-school partnerships is the key to the success of our students. Be mindful of this. Vote yes for families, vote yes for educators, vote yes for the safety committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Up next, we have Mr. Chad Ted Jacoby. Mr. Jacoby? He's not on. We now move on to Ms. Megan Stewart. Welcome, Ms. Stewart.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Megan Stewart, and I am the senior secretary at H.B. DuPont Middle School. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Red Clay Secretaries Association. I would like to thank both the Red Clay School Board, Dr. Green, and the district for working with our negotiations team to pass our contract. It meant a lot, and it does, to show that, see how much you care about the job we do. A unique part of our contract is the mentoring program for our secretaries and clerks. On behalf of the mentoring program development team, I'd like to offer you some insight into what the team is working on and what we would like to achieve. Through the mentoring program, support will be extended to our newest secretaries and clerks as they grow and learn in their new roles. The program aims to improve staff retention rates, excuse me, by fostering a culture of learning and collaboration among our peers, increase job performance, and close skill gaps. All mentors will work with mentees to create connections and build relationships that will enhance the Red Clay experience for our staff, students, and their families. As this is an initiative of the Red Clay Secretaries Association, taking this time this summer to research other successful mentoring programs across the nation is important to us, and we're trying to apply what we learned to our program as we plan to move forward. We're working with DSEA to develop a program with goals that are smart and measurable to ensure the success of our program. We hope that we have your continued support and look forward to working with you to make our mentoring program the first of its kind in the state of Delaware, a model of success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Up next, we have Ms. Nia Cruz. Welcome, Ms. Cruz.
Good evening. My name is Nia Cruz. I am the senior secretary at Shortlitch Academy, and I am also the president of the Red Clay Secretaries Association. This evening, I brought two fellow secretaries to discuss what we're doing with the mentoring program, which, thanks to the collaborative efforts and the relationships that Red Clay and RCSA have developed, brought this to fruition. So once again, we wanted to say thank you for your support and for passing our most recent three-year contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Up next, we have Twana Swanson. Welcome, Ms. Swanson.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Twana Swanson. I'm the financial secretary and human resources and the current vice president of the Red Clay Secretaries Association, which is also referred to as RCSA. Our union president, Nia Cruz, has attended countless board meetings and presented data to support the advancement of the Red Clay secretaries and clerks. On behalf of our association and bargaining team, I would like to thank the district and the board for working with RCSA and approving our most recent contract. This contract reflects a partnership between the clerical staff and the district to create a work environment that allows us to meet the needs of those we serve. Tonight, I want to draw to your attention to the peer mentoring program which is being implemented for the secretarial staff as an inclusion of this most recent contract. Our association has developed a team of secretaries who've been working diligently with the direction of DSEA to lay the foundation for the pilot year of this mentoring program. The primary focus of the peer mentoring program is to ensure all secretaries and clerks have the necessary support to help them be successful in their positions. The mentoring program will be instituted at the beginning of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year, where the initial goal is to partner mentors with new mentees and those who were hired within the district over the course of the past one to two school years. The program will eventually incorporate extra support to those secretarial staff members who have been in their positions, but may need some additional support. The mentoring program is not a self-contained program, and RCSA is looking forward to partnering with not only DSEA, but also the district and you, the Red Clay School Board. We know this program will help retain and develop and grow our secretarial staff. We look forward to a successful program and the support of our partners as we start the pilot year with this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Up next on Zoom, we have Ms. Amy Reynoso. Good evening, Ms. Reynoso.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, thank you so much for letting me make my public comment tonight. My name is Amy Reynoso. I'm a Red Clay parent. Um, I want to say that having board committees is a great way to support the strategic plan. Mr. Leonard's suggestion of a safety committee is a way to support the transportation safety concerns that parents have. The board policy committee is important for staying current with laws and technology changes. When Red Clay's Choice Policy eight zero one three came up for review this past winter, public committee members made suggestions to the policy. It was delayed until the spring, and then the following meeting had technology problems. As of today, there is no meeting scheduled to discuss this policy. And the delay is being played by the Office of Civil Rights. This policy has been getting pushed back for over a decade. I do see that there are five dates listed for this board policy committee, and it also has an asterisk for an as-needed basis. Who decides when it's needed? There were only six board policy meetings in the last full year, and all of those meetings were critical, especially the meeting discussing a policy that could potentially have civil rights violations. I hope you value board committee meetings and you value parents taking part. I also respectfully ask Dr. Green to insist that the deputy superintendent utilize the Zoom equipment that's in the boardroom for these meetings. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Reynoso. Up next, we have Ms. Erica Gutierrez on Zoom. Welcome, Ms. Gutierrez. She's not on. Moving on to Ms. Jennifer Howard. Good evening.
It's good. Can you hear me?
You can pull it up.
You can pull.
More?
Here.
You gotta talk to him. I was afraid I'm gonna break it. All right. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. First, I urge the board to pass a district-wide safety committee. It's been sixty-five days since James Messick was killed on his Red Clay assigned walking route. I've asked repeatedly for the board and the district to review the transportation policy. No action has been taken to this day, and school starts in just a few short weeks. A safety committee could review walking routes and bus stops. We can't continue to have kids running across Fourth Street in the city of Wilmington or allow buses to pick up and drop off on highways. Second, I want to talk for a minute about family involvement in decision-making processes and transparency between the district and the community. I applaud the board for allowing public comment to be made both in person and online. However, the format for public comment is one-sided, and there's rarely any follow-up. I asked the board to consider holding town halls for all of its constituents so that everyone's voices may be heard. This May, I attended a town hall held by Mike Smith at Goldie Beacom College, sorry, State Representative Mike Smith, where the superintendent and deputy superintendent were present to engage in Q and A from the public. Board members Ms. Thompson and Mr. Leonard were also present in the audience. I thought it was a nice way for a small portion of our district to voice their concerns. However, it certainly was not inclusive of our entire district. I was especially disheartened that this town hall happened after I specifically requested community town halls for the entire district at a board policy review committee meeting and was immediately shot down by a board member. Town halls would allow the rest of the district to voice concerns with the inequities that continue to plague the district. I've spoken to many parents about the enrollment preferences in Red Clay's magnet and charter schools, and despite what may have once been the case, this generation of parents, excuse me, sorry, are not happy with this process. By refusing to address this issue, it appears as though the exclusionary enrollment practices are kept in place at Conrad, CAD, DMA, and CSW, so students from the affluent areas of the district have their own set of good schools. Meanwhile, their counterparts, often minority groups and children from low-income homes, are stuck in underfunded and under-resourced schools. Over this past year, I've learned that choice system isn't for everyone. It's for the privileged and to keep our schools segregated by race and class. This leads me to my last point about TAG, the Talented and Gifted Program. Some kids in certain schools get TAG starting in first grade, and in other schools, it doesn't, they don't get it until third grade, and they're lucky if they even get it once a week. What does this say to our students about the adult, what the adults think about what they're capable of achieving? I truly hope you consider my comments as the voice of the voiceless, and I want to thank each of you for your continued commitment to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Up next, we have Mr. Hadrian Sissel on Zoom. Welcome, Mr. Sissel.
Hello, good evening. Um, my name is Hadrian Sissel. I'm a parent of a Red Clay student. I'm also a transgender man. The first time I made a public comment to this board in May, I was introduced as Miss instead of Mister. I was already very nervous, and being misgendered definitely didn't help. After the May meeting, I both spoke to a member of the board and sent emails suggesting a dropdown box be added to the public comment signup form to prevent that from happening to anyone else in the future. Such a dropdown box would give options such as Mister, Mrs., Miss, Doctor, et cetera. Yet, when I went to sign up for public comment in June, and again today in July, that dropdown box still has not been added. The issue here is, without this, you don't know how someone wishes to be addressed, and you are very likely to misgender someone again. In this strategic plan, Red Clay states that one of its goals is to increase parent guardian participation in school and district decision-making. I have to say, making the process for giving public comment as welcoming and inclusive as possible is one way Red Clay can do that. Please, add a dropdown box for honorifics to ensure that people giving public comments at school board meetings are addressed respectfully and correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sissel. Up next, we have Ms. Gianna Howard. Good evening, Ms. Howard.
Hi, you probably know me by now because I've been speaking at the board meetings since December of two thousand and twenty-three. I started speaking about the choice process because I am still so stressed about the, where I am going to middle school. I really wanted to go to Connor because my favorite sub- where I am going to middle school. I really wanted to go to Conrad because my favorite subjects are math and science. I'm in tech, and I score the highest in my class on seat tests. I'm number eighty-seven on Conrad's waitlist. My second choice was HB because I was interested in the activity block. I'm number forty-six on HB's wait list, so it doesn't look good for me to get into my first or second choice schools. I was offered to see at Dickinson's IB program, but I only put it on my choice application because my parents made me. Dickinson IB program is small. It's not a real middle school. It doesn't have tons of extra activities or sports. Also, the only option for language there is French, since I am already fluent in Spanish thanks to the immersion program. My feeder school's AI, where I would be required to take Spanish one, which would be a waste of my time since I'm fluent. So right now, I feel nervous and stuck because I still don't know where I'm going to school next month. Please fix this for me and for all the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Now, I'm getting messages that, um, Ms. Erica Gutierrez is on. Is she on, Ms. Stevens? She's not on. She's sending messages that she is on.
Is she on under her name?
She's on now. Ms. Gutierrez? Ms. Gutierrez?
Hello, can you hear me?
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, um, thanks for, um, letting me speak. My name is Erica Gutierrez. I am a Red Clay parent, a community leader, and supporter. And I want to talk about two topics. One, it's in regard to recovery credits for academically struggling kids. Even taking extra credits for students in good standing can be considered a privilege, and the District wants to fundraise money for advancement credits. It is most, it's mostly not the case for students who need to catch up with their academic requirements who fail classes during the regular, um, time at school. Uh, so the recovery credits are very difficult for families to to have access to if the cost is like the one it is right now, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Some of those students are struggling because of various reasons such as mental health, special needs, or personal situation. Even a small fee might be a good idea, like the last year fifty dollars. It's affordable for families to support the school as well on the needs. This year, three twenty-five is out of proportion, and it's setting barriers for kids to catch up and get low-income families in financial constraints. Red Clay can do better to ensure that equity is being served, implemented in every corner of programming and support for students. And the next comment is about, um, in regards to the as-on-need basis policy committee. I appeal and encourage the Board to keep that committee in function on a regular basis as under transparency obligation to parents, students, and constituents. That committee has at least three valuable and invested parents involved in providing voice and connection with community needs, and to remind you all of equity principles. You need that committee with these parents to bring important matters to your attention. Taking it away after the engagement and involvement of parents there so far being positive, go send the message that you don't really want to work with parents and working on policy matters directly with parents is what we need. You need us. So please keep that committee and don't try to make excuses to take it away. I appreciate your understanding and attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. We now move on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session held on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
So moved, Martin Wilson. Thank you, Ms. English. Uh, the motion's been properly, uh, motioned and seconded to approve the executive session held on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the mi- the minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular session held on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Martin Wilson. The motion has been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the regular session held on June twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the special board session held on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. English, uh, the motion has been properly moved and seconded uh, to approve the minutes from the special board session held on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. At this time, we will hear from our Superintendent, Dr. Green, who will share his superintendent report. Dr. Green?
Thank you, President Matthews. Again, welcome members of the community who are here in person and those who are joining us online. I will be brief uh, this evening as we are in the throes of the summer months. Um, there is still a lot going on between, um, meal programming and all of the various summer activities that we have going on, and hopefully everyone is trying their best to stay cool. I mean, this heat has been oppressive with the humidity and such, so, um, again, trying to be mindful of outdoor activities, but more importantly, keeping students engaged uh, throughout the summer. We want to take this opportunity on the cover portion of my presentation. Again, thank you to the Red Clay Education Foundation and all of the sponsors who came out for our annual golf outing. Um, again, the gracious, um, donation from the foundation to our McKinney Vento program of ten thousand dollars again this year. Um, I do believe that the foundation raised upwards of twenty-five thousand dollars as a whole. They not only support, again, our McKinney Vento or families who are experiencing homelessness, but various things that go on throughout our schools, the arts, um, various programs. So again, thank you to the Red Clay Education Foundation as well as our sponsors. And also, if you know of anyone who may be interested, um, please be on the lookout. The foundation will be soliciting and looking for new membership. Um, so again, another I have no opportunity for community involvement through the Red Clay Education, uh, Foundation. Again, please be on the lookout for the Red Clay Lunchbox, um, Picnic in the Park. It is a free, uh, part of our summer feeding or summer meal program. Um, we were also fortunate enough that CBS News profiled um, our school-child nutrition program, looking at innovative ways to ensure that students, um, and families, anyone under the age of eighteen years or younger, can have access not only to, um, our lunchbox at various locations. It will continue to run through August the first, Monday through Thursdays, but you can also go to redclaycafe.com to see other, uh, the fifteen other locations throughout the district that are providing, uh, summer meal program. Congratulations to Cab Calloway School Mixed Choir. They had a twenty-twenty-four National Hershey Park uh, Music Showcase Festival Sweepstakes winners. Again, this, there's a lot of talent, um, that is exuded in this theater as we sit here, but throughout the hallways, this is always a welcoming place to come, uh, for me, because there's no doubt that you may see someone sitting behind the piano in the lobby, um, someone singing. Um, and again, our students were able to showcase their talents. Um, so congratulations to the Cab Calloway Mixed School Choir for their uh, being, being national or the National Hershey Park Music Showcase Festival's grand sweepstakes winner. Also want to take this opportunity to thank and congratulate, um, our National Spanish Spelling Bee Contestants who not only represented, uh, Red Clay, um, but more importantly, represented the region. And so Red Clay attended the National, uh, Spanish Spelling Bee Competition recently held in El Paso, Texas, with thirty contestants in our very own, uh, river, a student at Lewis dual-language immersion program, uh, proudly represented again not just Red Clay, Casolino School District, but the entire Northeast region of the United States. We're so proud to share that river made it to the second round of the competition. And special thanks to her, his coach and fifth-grade teacher, uh, Ms. Sarah Braun, as well as the family members and school leaders who supported this effort. So congratulations. And also thank you to both schools, both Marlbrook and, uh, William C. Lewis for hosting the district Spanish Spelling Bee. So River was the, the winner from the district and again went on to represent the Northeast region. So again, congratulations. As I mentioned, summer learning is still underway. Our staff and students are enthusiastically engaged in making the most of the time to explore new topics, strengthen their skills, and prepare for the upcoming school year. Again, we have everything from Campus Connect going on, Spring into Learning, our Freedom School and, uh, ongoing partnership with Fame Incorporated. Uh, a lot and not all of our programs are STEM-based and activity-based experiential learning for our students. And again, thank you to all of the staff members from school, child nutrition, transportation, uh, facilities and maintenance who have to work around our summer programs as they get buildings prepped for the upcoming school year. And again, our clerical support staff, as not only they, they look at registrations, but they also support programs in the various buildings that they have. So it is a collective, community-wide effort. You know, it's interesting when I'm in and out and about the community, folks will say, oh, you have the summers off. And I'm like, actually, it's probably a lot more busy in the summer. Um, especially if you ask our front office staff, as they deal with new registrations, um, move up, financial systems shutting down and various aspects that they have to contend with. So, again, thank you to everyone for all of your collective efforts in providing ongoing summer opportunities for our students across Red Clay. Want to give a shout out to HB Dupont. Uh, they were TSA national champions. Congratulations to HB Dupont students for participating at the Technology Student Association National Conference in Orlando, Florida. HB earned first place in the national, in the nation, excuse me, for the Tech Bowl event. Students were able to network, uh, with students from all over the US as well as students from Germany, Turkey, and Korea. Nineteen HB students participated in this event, so special thanks to Mr. Jermaine Wilson, the CTE Career Technical Education Teacher at HB. And again, I would have loved to rattle off all nineteen names of the HB scholars, but in fear from missing someone's name or mispronouncing someone's name, we want to say congratulations to the team as a whole, not only for representing the district, um, but more importantly, the state of Delaware and well as your family. So congratulations to the TSA national champions from HB. Just want to highlight two upcoming opportunities. We have the Red Clay Summer Science Fairs, um, that will take place on July twenty-second at nine-thirty to ten-thirty at Johnson Shortridge. Uh, so schools that were represented there are, are Dr. Joseph E. Johnson, Shortridge Academy, and Warner families are invited to participate. Uh, it's from nine-thirty to ten-thirty AM on July twenty-second, and then on July twenty-third, Ritchie Elementary will host a ball, promote Ritchie and Richardson Park families for a science fair. We are continuing to seek, um, membership on the CFRC, which is the Community Financial Review Committee. There is a vacant position on the Community Financial Review Committee, which is also known as the CFRC. Uh, we invite you, consider joining the team. To apply, please submit your application to Dr. Ted Ammon, uh, Chief Operating Officer. For more information, visit our website. Uh, the Women to Learning Collaborative will have its next meeting, um, on August twentieth. Um, the meeting will take place at the Delaware State, um, Building down on the Riverfront. Uh, we were transitioning throughout schools in the WLC. Um, and I do want to give a shout out to our technology department, in particular, Mr. Tony Clemens, because when he's on the scenes, we don't have any issues, but moving about nine schools throughout the city of Wilmington, there were, you know, several technology issues and really trying to make it consistent on a hybrid platform, um, for both families in the community at large. Um, that meeting will be hosted at the, uh, Delaware State Building on the Riverfront, um, which is where the WLC offices are housed. Um, and we are hiring. Um, so if you are looking to join, uh, the most dynamic, most remarkable school district in the state of Delaware, um, we're asking you to apply now. If you know someone who is interested in having a remarkable career, please join our team. Again, please reach out to our Human Resource Department or go on our website. Um, you can also look at joindelawareschools, um, dot com, which also has information on there about various postings. But if you are interested, please contact us at hr@redclay.k twelve.de.us. Again, that's hr@redclay.k twelve.de.us. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Any comments, questions? Moving along, we welcome Dr. Ted Ammon for presentations.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I, I don't have a clicker here, so Tony is my clicker. So those of you that said it should be quick, you need to, to look at Tony. He'll get us through it as, as quickly as he can click. Um, I would like to thank the board members who've heard, um, the spiel, uh, previously. Our newest board member came in yesterday recognizing that her first, uh, meeting was a consequential vote in terms of the budget. So she came in and then, uh, last night, um, Ms. Kathy Thompson heard this at the CFRC. So I will try and go through it quickly, but also, um, certainly want to cover some key points, and we'll answer any questions that anyone, anyone has. Uh, every year, this time, the reason we are here right after the Fourth of July weekend, uh, rather than our typical schedule, is because the tax warrant is due to Newcastle County tomorrow morning. Uh, I have received about eight reminders from them already that they need it first thing tomorrow morning. Um, so we will get that in, in there. Um, in terms of putting together the tax rates and preliminary budget, there's some assumptions that we, we have to make and some, um, predictions we have to make. One of the things that, that went into that this year is that our assessed property value, the total value of property in Red Clay School District went down by half a percent, which is significant. Um, typically, we see between a quarter and a half percent growth. This year, we saw a half percent decrease, which was um, almost entirely a result of two, um, large properties that had reassessments done. And so that resulted in a, a decrease in our assessed value, and I will unfortunately refer to that a couple of other times throughout this presentation because it does have some long-term effects for us. I also, uh, continued to assume that we will have a one percent delinquency rate. That's a rate that we've been using for, I would say, at least ten years, and we have found that it's a, a reasonable rate. Um, Newcastle County does a very good job of helping, um, not even helping, they do it for us. They collect all of our property tax receipts and then remit them to us on, in a timely fashion. So one percent is a, a, in my opinion, a very reasonable rate that, than other people also use in other districts. This also, um, incorporates the tax rates that were set based on the referendum in February that the community approved, which will, um, change the current operating expense as well as the debt service, um, tax rate. And as I mentioned earlier, we reviewed this last night in, in great detail at the CFRC meeting. One of the other things we need to do this time of year is look into the state budget. People have asked, why don't you do the tax warrant in June so that we don't have to come right back after the Fourth of July? But one of the things we try and do is take into account whatever our General Assembly does at the, um, the last minute in June up through June thirtieth, when they have to finish all of their legislation for the season. And so this, uh, tax warrant, as well as the budget, takes into account the State PEC Committee, which is a committee that was put together to look at, um, educational salaries, whether it was for our office staff, our custodians, our, uh, paraprofessionals, our teachers, and so forth. So it takes into account the, uh, the increases that, that we're seeing as a result of that to the tune of about seven point seven million dollars on the state side. That's, that's funding that the state is providing to implement their share of, of those recommendations. We also are seeing the third step of the opportunity to funding that has been increasing for each of the last uh, two years. This is the third and final plan to increase. So we will see approximately a, a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in those funds, which we talked, um, quite a bit about last month, and we'll talk about again, um, in later in the year. We, we also saw from the state a, a block grant put in place for HB two hundred. Some of you that have been around for a while remember hearing about HB one hundred that helped to provide mental health services for elementary school students. HB three hundred provided, um, those same types of services for middle school students, and then we're going from three hundred back down to two hundred to go up to our secondary students, and they are phasing that program in to help provide a much-needed mental health resources for our, our secondary students. And there was also a, a block grant sponsored by our own, um, representative, Mike Smith, to, um, provide funding for athletic trainers because there is a recognition that districts all need, if you have a sports program, you need to have an athletic trainer, which is not something that has been historically funded through the unit count, but districts need to provide. So we are appreciative of that additional funding. Also, there is, um, one-time funding this year that the General Assembly provided for, they're calling enhanced minor cap. As you know, every year, there is minor capital improvement funding that is provided. This year, there was some, um, I guess, extra money they found at the end of the year, um, and they decided to provide that extra money to schools to take care of the, uh, significant deferred maintenance throughout the state. And for Red Clay, that, that is about a one-point-two-million-dollar, um, addition to our budget for maintaining our buildings. So we certainly are appreciative of that. You know, we often, uh, fault, uh, Dover for not providing everything that we need, but this is certainly an example of General Assembly providing some, uh, much-needed funds. But, but I do have to go on to the next bullet here that says that the General Assembly did not restore the give-back that we have been, um, I have to keep it fair and balanced here, but, um, for the last ten years or so, the state has requested that once they do all the calculations and provide all the funding to the districts, we have to give back a portion of money from, um, years ago when there was some state, uh, shortfalls. And so that to, for Red Clay is about two-point-seven-million dollars. So that will continue as it has for the last couple of years. The number changes based on our relative size compared to other districts. So with that, we will get into the four different tax rates. The first one is the current expense rate. As much as you're voting on it, you really don't have any choice on this tax rate because this is the one that is set by the voters when we go to referendum. So you will see there is an increase this year of thirty cents, which was, you know, as per the referendum, the first, um, phase of a, a three-year phase in. The next tax rate that we set tonight is another one that you do not have much choice in, um, unfortunately, even though you do have to vote on it. And that's our debt service rate. And that debt service tax is what allows us to collect the payments to pay back the bonds that have been taken, all based on major capital improvement, um, referendums over the last twenty years. So that's what, um, that, that, that service rate is set to do. And I, I do want to note that we are required, um, by law to collect enough money that we can make not only next year's payments, but also any payments that are due during the first four months of the year after. So this budget does, does allow us to So this budget does does allow us to make that commitment. And it also, we we are also supposed to set a ten percent uncollected debt rate, which is an issue we've talked about at the C F R C over a number of years due to a an audit finding. And it's something that I'm here to tell you, our our assumption of uncollected debt is one percent. It has been one percent for many years, and we have seen that one percent is a very reasonable rate. So while someone say we should set it at ten, what that would do is we would artificially increase the burden for our taxpayers, only to find out that we have collected too much money and then have to lower the rate again next year. So certainly people in my line of work like certainty and like gradual things rather than sharp ups and downs. So this this recommendation before you is assuming a one percent decrease in taxes. And of course, we will watch that each month and report at the C F R C on how we're doing and how close that one percent is is to the actual rate. The next two rates are the ones that that the board does have a little bit more discretion than the first two. The next one is our tuition tax. And while I say the board has some discretion, our tuition tax is what allows us to set a rate to collect revenue to pay for the required special programs that we have, including First Aid School, the pre K program, Meadowwood, our M L program, and our needs based funding. So that 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 tuition rate varies from year to year based on what we need to run those programs. One of the changes this year that I wanted to point out that that led to an increase in this tax is that there is a new state regulation regarding charter schools. Currently, if one of our students chooses to go to a charter school or a choice school, another choice school outside of Red Clay, there's a formula that figures out how much we spend per student, and then it sends, very reasonably sends that money along with that student. Make it sound like the student takes it in his lunchbox, but no, the student gets transferred to that school so that they can provide the education that they would have received here in Red Clay. There is a change in the regulation this year that for charter schools, not for choice students, but for charter schools, if the student is identified as a complex or intense student, there is an additional amount of funding that is sent to those charter schools for them to use to educate those students if they have those needs. So that is for Red Clay about a half million dollars that is built into this this tax rate so that we can comply with that regulation and send that money to the various charter schools where our students go. And then the last component of the 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 tax rate that you're setting tonight is our match tax. And then someone asked me, well, what what is the match tax? And really, what I would say is the match tax is a way that the General Assembly decided that when they have initiatives that they are pushing for districts to take part in, there's a local cost. We've talked about that before, what for everything we do, there's a state and a local share when it comes to salary and so and and other programs. So the match tax is what allows us to pass on the local share of those programs, and that is something that is seeing a an increase this year. The recommendation that we're making is a one point eight cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, and that is primarily driven by, it's really two pieces. One is there are certainly staff members that are covered in the match tax. For instance, many of our reading specialists are paid for through a state block grant where we are required to pay for the local share of their salaries, and that comes out of this tax. So as salary policy increases, whether it's the state side or our local side, there is an increased expense from us. And in addition, the opportunity funds I mentioned earlier, the opportunity funds are increasing. And so as the state provides more funds and we have more programs, there are local shares, local expenses to that. So this represents our our match tax to those opportunity funds. And this, I can't do a budget presentation without a Pac Man graph. This is the the graph that shows you that the vast majority of our taxes taxes, approximately seventy five percent, are are set based on our community when they vote in a referendum, our current expense tax, as well as our our debt service tax, and then the tuition tax and the match tax make up the remainder of that. The other thing I wanted to share here, because I think it's something that our board should be very proud of, is that if you look at our tax rates over the last, and this chart just shows the last five years, because otherwise the print has to get much smaller. But it shows that our board, I believe, has been very careful in setting the tax rates for those two taxes that are discretionary, somewhat discretionary. I mean, it's to comply with with federal and and state mandates in many cases. But in addition to our current expense and our debt tax, you can see there are tuition tax and our match tax has not increased significantly. It has, in some cases, gone down because we, you know, we're not a bank. We don't believe we should be collecting money just to keep it. So if if our costs, if we've generated too much of a buffer, we lower that rate. So if you look at over the last five years, the total overall increase has been fifteen percent, but that's over, you know, those five years. So if you divide that out, that's an average of about three point seven eight percent per year, which if you look at inflation rates by by any of the various measures for the inflation rates, three point seven percent, I think, is something our board should be very proud of, that we have certainly raised taxes when we needed to, but not excessively.
And
I I think Darrell was gonna say something.
Just before you go on, Dr. Ammon, just for the board to, again, be be keen, you know, as we were going through this budget cycle and, you know, the governor provides his general, the governor's recommended budget, which is called the G R B. They use an inflation factor of about two percent. And one of the things that Dr. Ammon was very keen on analyzing and scrutinizing our budget, again, was to actually see that they, during the markup, increased that to eight percent, which meant that we would, in essence, had to defer that cost to our choice and charter payments. And so based on his due diligence, we were able to work with, you know, our key legislators to get that reduced in understanding that whatever is tied to the pay policy of the state should be aligned to what we have to do from a inflation factor percentage. So I just want to publicly acknowledge that and Dr. Ammon not combing through our budget with a fine tooth comb. You know, an eight percent inflation factor would have been, you know, burdened on us as a district. And again, that money goes out to choice and charter payments and not necessarily would have been, you know, housing the district. So that's not money that we would have been retaining. That would have been money that we'd been paying out. So again, just thank you to Dr. Ammon for his due diligence and really scrutinizing and combing through things with a fine tooth comb to be able to catch that during the General Assembly markup. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. I can complain, but I can't change it. So I would have to also acknowledge our our reps, especially Representative Kim Williams, that that said, well, that doesn't make sense. So she worked with a a majority of people to get that done. So. Then we're going to move on to the the second part of this, which is our our budget presentation. Once we set that tax rate, then we know how much revenue is coming in, and then we have to figure out what are we going to do with that revenue and how are we going to fund our programs? And in order to talk about next year, we really need to to look quickly, very quickly, I promise, at where we ended the previous year. And so this shows that our our state and and local revenues ended two hundred and seventy six million dollars at about a hundred and three percent of what we estimated. So certainly on the revenue side, I like to see that we get more than we planned. That that's where you want to be high on an estimate, or or you want to be low on an estimate and receive more. On the expenditure side, we had the opposite problem, which is also where I'd like to be. Our expenditures were two hundred and seventy seven million dollars, which was slightly less than I had budgeted for, meaning we we spent ninety nine point seven percent of what we estimated, coming in a little bit lower than we we had planned. And and overall, the most important number and the number that we've talked about previous years is how many local dollars we have at the end of the year, once everything is said and done. And and that's a key number, and our local ending, our local funds ending balance was five point seven million dollars at a hundred and eleven percent of what we estimated, meaning that we did come in a little bit higher than than where we thought. And and quite frankly, part of that, there's really two reasons. We have a a very disciplined team in in district office, as well as our schools, that if we give them a budget, that's what they spend. There really is not an option to just spend more than that without calling and having a discussion about, you know, if you really need to do this, how are we going to pay for it? And we also benefited from interest rates, as much as we all are seeing interest rates on on our consumer spending being a a negative thing in terms of credit card debt. It's a positive thing in terms of when we have cash. So the state provides interest to school districts on all of our deposits. So this year, we continue to see an increase in interest rates that that was not planned for to the extent that we received, so that 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 also helped. But the bottom line is we ended the year at five point seven million dollars, which is ahead of where we had predicted slightly, a hundred and eleven percent. So it's eleven percent more than we expected, and that takes us into how we're starting our year, which started on July first. A nice thing for the first week or so, the finance system is done, so we do not have any documents to approve or or review for a week, but they have started to coming in. You heard from some of our office secretaries earlier in the meeting, they they usually come back from Fourth of July, ready to go and enter and get things purchased so that our teachers have what they need when they start the school year. Some significant details from from F Y twenty four that that move into this twenty five budget is that we had, and I have to mention this again, that very significant decrease in local revenues of about a million dollars as a result of two different properties that that had a reassessment that the county approved, and that was money that we were not expecting to see. It was late late this fall that the county approved it, and so that worked its way through. And so that was a a significant decrease. As I mentioned earlier, interest was on the positive side. We did receive quite a bit more interest than we had estimated. Our substitute costs is something C F R C has discussed quite a bit over the year. It was not a surprise, but our substitute costs are about thirty percent higher than we had originally budgeted. And it was not a surprise that that happened. It was a number of factors. The General Assembly allowed state employees to take more personal time off than they had been allowed to take in the past. So certainly, our our teachers who require substitutes when they're out, if they take more days, that means we need more substitutes, and so there's an increased cost. In addition, the state increased the rate for substitutes, so that, of course, drives up our cost for them. And quite frankly, Keenan and his team with our substitute vendors have done a very good job with fill rates. So something we used to hear about was quite a bit, teachers would say, I can't be sick because there's no one to cover my class. And what we've seen is that 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 number, that the amount of times that there is not a substitute, has really gone down quite a bit. The negative side of that is there's a cost for the additional substitutes. So it's of all the costs that we see increase, I would see it as a positive thing. I can't believe I'm saying that, but it's a positive thing that we're spending more on subsidies, because it means that there is someone in that building covering when a teacher needs to be out. And then the final piece of that is S R funds. We had provided building based substitutes out of S R funds, and as part of our referendum commitment, we had said that we wanted to keep them in some form, because they're a very productive piece of our schools and and schools have have come to count on them. And so in this bridge year, while we hoped that the community would support the referendum for for future years, we did know that that would have a local cost. The other thing that continues to to increase is related services, which is the services, most of this is the services that we provide to students with special needs based on their I E P. If the team feels that they need additional counseling or additional O T P T services like that, those costs have increased significantly, which is consistent with, you saw the tuition tax rate went up. And those services are very expensive to provide. The vendors that we use are passing on increased costs that they have to us. So that that was, again, it was a number that we've been watching all year. We knew that it would be increasing, and it's been taken into account for for next year. On on the other side, technology costs were about ten percent lower than we had estimated. Christine Bealy finished the Interactive Smart Panel project that was done and certainly had some ideas of what to do next, but was was told, no, you need to, you know, take a break from from that this year, because we knew we had those related services costs and the substitute costs. So that's, you know, really what my team helps me to do throughout the year is look at, you're never going to be a hundred percent perfect, but you need to look at where you have those changes and and account for them. And then probably the most important bullet to to kind of wrap up the year is our local salary line, which was by far the most significant line of any of our budget lines, ended up at ninety nine point five percent of what we estimated, which you you can't get much closer to a hundred percent than ninety nine point five. Obviously, our our math people would tell us we we can, but but that is, you know, it's very close, and it is a result of our team working very closely. We we manage that every pay cycle we check to see, because you just don't know when a a teacher retires, you don't know at what point on the pay scale that replacement teacher will will come in at and so forth. So we watch that very carefully, because if that number works out well, the overall budget will work out well. And and so that that shows that that we did end up where we expected. Our our next one highlights, and we are getting close to the end, I promise. I I do have to mention yet again, this budget in F Y twenty five accounts for that decrease in assessed value, and you'll see there the numbers higher. Why is that? It was two properties that were reassessed. Last year was on last year's tax rate. The referendum increased the tax rate. And so if we have less assessed value, that means that we have less money coming in based on that referendum. It it's not a concern in that we certainly, you can't predict with certainty what's going to happen over the next four, five, six, or seven years, but that this was a big change that we were not expecting. It it was large enough that when D U we got the report, they called and said, what's going on? Do you know anything about this? And of course, we had been working with the county on it. The second thing this budget does, it incorporates our referendum. As I mentioned, this is the first year we'll be seeing the results of that referendum. And so we have a balanced budget for the last, oh, quite a few years, we've been talking about deficit spending, which in Delaware and schools, you you have to do that, because you set the rate, you have a referendum, and then you spend down that balance until you go back out. So this is the first year as a result of that referendum that our budget is balanced. I'm not exactly to zero. We're actually about two hundred thousand dollars to the positive, but I'll call that balanced. And it also very much limits budget growth for for principals that are listening on Zoom, who are expecting to see a very significant increase in their budgets. This is not going to do that. It is limiting our budget growth primarily a hundred percent to what we said we would be doing during the referendum. And so for this next slide, I've I've highlighted a few things, and I'll go through them quickly. We said at that time, we would be increasing, improving our curricular and strategic plan initiatives, and so this budget does include in does include an increase in that. Additional constable support is something we had talked about, and A J is already working, and A J is very picky in his staffing and wants the, you know, the best candidates for this. So he is working on that to make sure that we can bring on those additional constables. It maintains our building based subs program so that we do have schools that can count on a familiar face being in that building every day. And then, as we also said during the referendum, it increased, it would provide for increased compensation for all of our employees. And so we did negotiate with all of our our unions and have provided at least a three percent increase. Each union's different, because unions have different priorities in terms of where they'd like to see some of this. So we have at least a three percent increase across the board. Administrative view approved last month, and that was at two point five percent. We provided longevity increases for teachers, meaning that they will be seeing that additional amount based on our recognition of their longtime service to the district, as much as eleven years sooner than they saw it in the past. E P R rates, which is the rate that we provide to teachers for doing extra work, whether it's coaching or extra tutoring with students, those rates went up five percent. We provided some teacher leadership stipends. Our tuition reimbursement certainly is a, as a school district, we value education, and so when our teachers take additional coursework, we do have we four four hundred percent growth in what we're reimbursing teachers for their their coursework, our healthcare stipends, and our Wilmington City Wage Tax. So I say all that to say we had went out to the referendum and said that we would be increasing our compensation, and this budget does does do that. So as a summary, our opening balance on the right hand column, their opening balance was at five point seven million dollars. Shows there are total revenue between local and state revenue brings our total available funding this year to three hundred and four million dollars. The next slide shows the other side of that. If we start out with three hundred and four million dollars, where what are we going to do with it? And what this budget does, it has two hundred and ninety eight million dollars in expenditures with a closing balance of five point nine million, which is, in essence, I would say, a balanced budget. It's not exactly zero. We will end the the year with with about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars more than we when we started the year with. And I do want to point out one one quick point there, Tony, before you go on. We do, in addition to that, Red Clay does carry a five million dollar local reserve ready day fund, whatever you want to call it. There there is that that appropriation there that has that money. We would not spend that money without bringing it to the board and letting the board know that there was a, you know, a very significant expense that needed us to use that. So that would be in addition to the 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 numbers that you see there. Federal funds are a component of our budget outside of the things we've talked about so far. So far, I was surprised, Mr. Simmons is here tonight. He is, this is his his crunch time for getting the consolidated grant in, so I thought he would be home working on that, because his team has a tough job this year. Our our federal funding is thirteen million dollars, and it is going to be thirteen million dollars again. We saw a point two percent increase in those federal funds. So what his team is having to do is figure out if salaries are going up three percent, six percent, depending on how the the employee is paid, and the federal government's only giving us point two percent, how do we make that all work? So him and his team are are working on that this week, and will do the best they can to provide the same level of services to our schools with those federal dollars. And then the overall district budget, we have the state and local operating expenditures that that I mentioned earlier, our match tax, debt service tax, tuition, federal programs. The last one that we haven't talked about, the only one we haven't talked about, is our nutrition funds, which are managed as a completely separate budget from the district. Certainly, we we have oversight and we work together with them, but it has nothing to do with local tax dollars. It's all funded through the federal government, the state government, and also any revenue that they get from from the the school lunch program. And that's thirteen and a half million dollars. So our next steps, assuming the board approves the tax warrant tonight, is that that tax warrant will go to the county so they can generate the tax bills and get them sent out to property owners. The board will not be voting on the budget tonight, keeping with our typical cadence of things we presented tonight. You will have a month to review it and ask any questions that you have, either personally, you can call me or or at our next board meeting. And then we would ask that you approve that that budget in August. Most of our tax revenue comes in in September and October when our our property taxes are due. And then September thirtieth, obviously, is the big count in in Delaware, where we have to figure out exactly how many kids we have, and that's what generates how many units were provided. And then in February, I will be back here with a presentation, hopefully shorter presentation, that figures out where we are based on this prediction, based on the number of students, based on our tax rates, all those things. And you will have a chance to approve a final budget. And then this spring, we will have quite a few, I would imagine, quite a few discussions about the impact of reassessment. Newcastle County is going through a reassessment process, as is Kent and Sussex County, and there are going to be lots of questions about that, what it means, what it doesn't mean, how it impacts the district. The district, how it impacts homeowners in the district and so forth. So we will talk quite a bit about that in the spring. And of course, every month we meet, um, at Balt and online through, through Zoom. We have our, our C F R C committee meeting. Where we, we, you think this presentation was long? It was about two, two and a half hours last night. So that, that committee does, um. Spend a lot of time looking through these things, asking questions, and we certainly welcome any of those questions that people have. And with that, I am done unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions, comments?
I have, I just, we did, I'm on the C F R C. I was there last night. We did spend. A lot of time talking about this. We had a lot of community members present. We had answered a lot of questions. And at the end of it, the C F R C voted to approve the tax warrant. So I just wanted to let everybody know that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Any other questions, comments?
I did have, um, just a couple of things. Uh, first and foremost, uh. Lot of good stuff. We certainly would be having a very different conversation if the referendum did not pass. So it's great to be able to have, uh, a discussion about. You know, the tax rate and, and where we are with the budget very positively because again. Um, with the large support of the community and, and community voice, we've been able to really make, make some really positive headway. So. Uh, it had first and foremost acknowledge that. The one thing that I, I'm always curious about. Um, and even in discussions when we had the referendum on slide four, for the F Y twenty five budget additions. Uh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Slide four, current expense. Where we jumped from a dollar fifty where we were previously to a dollar eighty. I just want to confirm that still places us. Where, um, and, and, and perspective in comparison to the other. Surrounding school districts in Newcastle County. Are we still the lowest?
I, I don't have that information in front of me. I can certainly get it back. I don't want to.
Is over two dollars and.
Certainly Colonial had a referendum this year and Brandywine had a referendum this year. So there, there's been a lot of movement on that, but I certainly can plan to in August have, have that comparison just so you can see.
I'm interested to see where we, where we rank just because we were so far behind before. I believe some of the others were really far ahead and I know Christina has been well over two dollars for. Quite some time. Um, their tax rate is certainly substantially higher. And when I go to slide fourteen, F Y twenty five budget additions. Um, thank you for all your work in terms of, uh, making sure that we try. To appreciate our staff and, and, and the work that they do. A lot of raises went out. Um, I mean, three percent for everyone, two point five for admin. I would be curious to know. Where we fall. Um, I think just as a board, it's really healthy for us to know. Uh, where we fall. Um, I mean, two point five. In, 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 in this economy and this competitiveness, it, it's, it's not a lot. And so it's not just so. So much even for, you know, the two point five for the admin position, but just across the board. Um, and maybe we, we could take the conversation offline, but just to kind of get some insight. Where we rank after. We knew where we were before, but now after the fact, just to kind of. See what progress we've made and.
You would ask for that. We are, we are, we haven't ignored that request, but this is the time here where. As much as you're doing all this stuff, other districts are also doing it. So, um, to, it really give you that thorough analysis. We need to make sure that we're comparing. Apples to apples and we're using F Y twenty five. Uh, scales as well as what Colonial, Brandywine, Christina. So we will certainly get that to you. But we, we have gained. Certainly we have gained, but much like we talk with our, our, our teachers and our students, if they're behind. We want them to, to keep up and go a little bit further. You, you can't expect someone to make three years of growth in one year, but you can hope that they make more than one year of. Of growth. So we certainly made some progress. We have agreements that Pat, that go out past this next year. We're just talking about. F Y twenty five. We have some additional increases in F Y twenty six. So. Um, we, we did get that request of you and we will put that together and, and share it with the board.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, comments? Without further ado, we move on to, thank you, Dr. Avon. We move on to action items.
So action item A, F Y twenty five tax rate tax warrant. It is a recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the tax rate slash tax warrant for F Y twenty five estimated.
Do I have a motion?
So moved Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Second, Martin Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. English. The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. English win.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Sander.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Unanimous motion carries.
Action item B. It is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the state bond anticipation note. Related to the major capital improvement project approved by the voters on the February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four referendum.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved Kathy.
Is there a second?
Second.
The recommendation has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. English win.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Ms. Sander.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Unanimous motion carries.
Action item C. It is a recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the board retreat and workshop schedule for F Y twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. So moved, Mr. Wilson.
Is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. English win.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Ms. Sander.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Unanimous motion carries.
Action item D. Donation to North Star is a recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved a fifteen hundred dollar donation from Mr. Panos. Artemiades to North Star Elementary School to purchase shelves for the library.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved Kathy Thompson.
Is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English. Has been properly moved and seconded to approve the recommendations. Is there any discussion?
Just a huge thank you to Mr. Artemi, Artemiades.
Yes. Thank you so much for your generosity. Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. English win.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Ms. Sander.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Unanimous motion carries.
Action item E. It is a recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approves Courtney Greenley as principal of Richardson Park Elementary School. Effective July eleventh, twenty twenty four, submitted. The salary will be commensurate with the approved administrative salary schedule.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Mr. Wilson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. English. It's properly been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Any discussion? Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. English win.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Ms. Sander.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes. Yes.
You saying yes.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes, congratulations.
Unanimous motion carries.
Stay on mute, Mr. Wilson. Action item F. It is a recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved Monsieur Vaughn Carter as assistant principal of A I Dupont High School. Effective July eleventh, twenty twenty four, submitted. The salary is commensurate with the approved administrative salary schedule.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sander. Motion's been properly moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. English win.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Ms. Sander.
Yes.
Ms. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes, congratulations, Ms. Carter.
Ms. Carter is in the audience. Congratulations.
We got to stand.
Action item G. It is the recommendation that the Board of Education. Reestablish a school, say, a school board safety committee.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded to approve the recommendation. Is there any discussion?
I do have some discussion on this.
Ms. Thompson?
So, um, I just wanted to, I know Mr. Leonard put information in board docs. About the, uh, support letter. And I wanted to include a couple of facts that were omitted from that statement. So just so everyone knows, the board held a board retreat on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. So we could get to know each other, discuss committees and set priorities for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. All board members were in attendance. The board retreat agenda specifically talked about charge statements for committees. Per our board policy and we were act to provide, we were asked to provide them. The only person that provided any was me. The board collectively discussed which committee should continue and knew it needed to vote on that at an open meeting. And the board also identified priorities for the upcoming school year that needed to be voted on at an open meeting. The minutes from the retreat were unanimously approved with one abstention. That was Mr. Camp, Mr. Casper by all board members. A special meeting was held on Au- Au- August ninth, and it had to have been noticed at least seven days in advance because it was a public meeting. That special meeting was to vote on the committees as well as the priorities. Um, there was never any problem with what we were voting on. And the, the committee voted, uh, everybody present and Mr. Leonard was absent unanimously voted to approve. Sunsetting certain committees and on the, on the committees and, and on the priorities that were established. The minutes of that meeting were unanimous, met unanimously approved by every board member. No mention was made of any issue relating to the committees until last meeting. The board function is to set the direction of the district through policy and to hire. The superintendent to carry out that policy. And everyone knows that it's clearly set forth in Delaware code ten forty three. Fourteen Delaware code ten forty three. The board's function is policy creation and the superintendent's is. Execution and admin, administration. Again, set forth in the law as well as in our own board policy. To do its work, the, the board has created a policy and its advisory committee, Board Policy nine thousand and four. That board policy clearly states. That advisory committees are meant to be created to assist in research or other well-defined activities. In any areas of board responsibility. Check out Board Policy nine thousand and four. Which we not only created, but we approved recently. Committees are so create, create, so created are required to state the length of time members are to serve. The specific area of service, the resources to be provided by the board. The relationship with the board and the individual board members, superintendent and professional staff needed. The proposal provided by Mr. Leonard does none of these and. Does none of those and as of today states the purpose as being to ha, quote, to have district personnel. Share the status of safety and security issues facing our school community. And provide solutions and recommendations to change, for change to address those issues. That's in the charge statement that was provided. The purpose or charge as stated is informational and not directed to any resource, resource, research or purpose. And has the district making recommendations of what is to occur. The committee has no charge except to hear what the district has to say. At best, this work is for the entire board. Just like the student achievement and the curriculum and the student achievement committee, it was the work of the entire board. And should be done in a workshop or series thereof or town halls. That way, everyone can participate, all board members and everyone from the public. It is open, it is inclusive, which a committee is not. And it allows opportunities for everyone to participate. In addition, Board Policy nine thousand and four clearly states who the members of the committee need to be. And those include, if there is a committee, the three district administration, three school leadership, two teachers chosen by the R C E A, one by the district. Parents and community members, one per nominating district. And if there's a, a special expertise needed. Um, they can be, that person can be appointed by the superintendent. Mr. Leonard's charge in committee draft doesn't follow this and tries to appoint fewer people. So our contract required with the R C E A requires otherwise. Okay, so it's a problem. The board should absolutely follow its own policy. By adopting this proposal, the board is violating its policy. If the purpose of the committee is to share information and suggest solutions. It should be shared with the entire board, not just three board members that potentially sit on this committee. And potentially only a couple of people from the community. I think the number that he has. On there is two, but I can't remember that right off the top of my head. It's here. I just don't have it right in front of me. Maybe I do. Yeah, it would include. Oh, three members of the community, excuse me. Whereas if we have a, an open meeting or a town hall or a workshop, it can, it can include all of the community. So I think that what we're doing is limiting. What we need to do here and limiting it to only a few people. Whereas it should be open and transparent to all. So my suggestion is that we go forth. And if we're going to do anything, we do it through workshops.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Is there any other? Comments?
Well. I just want to say that, uh. We, uh, with all the outcry we've had with the community on safety issues, this is essential and it is a, uh, public meeting. It would be, everyone could join virtually or whatever. So we aren't setting anyone out. If it's a board committee meeting, everybody's invited to it. And not like you say, uh, only people that are inviting. So, and I believe the board's, uh, safety committee, right now it's listed as a district committee. Uh, we voted last year, uh. A majority vote on this committee, on this board to have a safety committee, a board safety committee. It lasted a couple of months and then it was sunset, uh, a few months after that. And, uh, reassessed as a district committee. Now, district committee is, uh, I don't know what the definition of that is. I've asked for that, uh, in our committee meetings. I haven't found out what that definition is. But two meetings for safety in one year is, is not nearly enough where things are happening in our district. We've had many tragedies in our district. We had some, uh, incidents in schools. And I think it's our duty, uh, to serve the, uh, the people that elected us here. And do the, the work for them. So I highly recommend that we make this a board committee meeting, not a district committee. Uh, so everyone. Could be informed of what's going on and feel, uh, more confident that we are being transparent about what we're doing with safety and security.
I, I would, I'm.
Can I hear it, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I need to respond to that. So as a committee, and you sit on committees and I sit on committees and you know. Committee members have a lot of input. The community gets to speak for a couple of minutes. At a workshop, at a workshop, everybody can speak and everybody can have input. So I think that, and it, this is the work of the board. Not of a committee. And the committee work that you've suggested is to get information. That isn't committee work. It isn't. That is not the purpose of a committee, to get information. If the board wants to get information, the board needs to, the whole board needs to get the information, not just three members.
So if, if I may, just maybe make a suggestion to the board as you proceed. And again, we, we did meet. Several times as a community safety committee and out of that community safety committee was, was the, the health and wellness fair was born out of that work. Um, that had over forty different community partners engage in the work where we focus on everything from. Gun violence that's plaguing our communities to health and wellness to. Um, you name it again, over forty different vendors and providers. Um, unfortunately, when July tenth, when we were supposed to meet. We also had to table it because we also established a discipline committee. Along with R C E A that met on January twenty ninth, February twenty sixth, March twenty fifth, April twelve, twenty second. And June twelfth, where I got the final recommendations. In addition to that, we also have the District Safety and Crisis Response Team. Which met on October twelfth, January eleventh, March fourteenth, May ninth. Many of the partners, we're also working with Dr. Aaron Kupcheck, the University of Delaware to secure. A federal grant to look at community violence and how community violence impacts our schools. Um, presently, I serve as well as Kelly Shayhan. Um, who runs our transportation department, also serves on the Senate Concurrent Resolution. Um, Legislative School Discipline and Climate Task Force. Um, I think the next meeting is on the twenty fourth. Our last meeting was on June twenty fourth. Um, we also have as a result of disproportionality. Um, the disproportionality work group, which is working with the Department of Education on significant disproportionality for students with disabilities. So there are a number of, I would say, approaches and things that we're doing as a district to address school climate, to address. Behavior, to address discipline. We have had spikes in outcries. At certain schools, I could tell you being year five, going on year six, each year. There's been a different school that has had a different focus, um, relative to. Whether that would be behavioral, crisis response or various incidents. So that's not to diminish to, to say that, you know. Mr. Leonard doesn't have. So that's not to diminish to say that, you know, Mister Leonard doesn't have validity in what he's requesting, but I would maybe just say for the board. Make it a retreat topic, so that we can actually look at where we have intersectionality between a lot of these commi- uh, committees. And various district level things to elevate that to the board and the community as a whole, to address some of these issues. And also help support our schools, um, you know, in terms of having some of these maybe at specific building level. Um, levels of engagement, especially when we see certain incidents or things spike within each given school, help our schools build a capacity. To be able to support families and students within those said schools that maybe having issues spur or crop up during the course of the school year.
I just wanna say that I think that it should definitely be a workshop topic, um. Personally.
So I'm gonna make an amendment. I'm gonna move that it is recommended the Red Clay Board of Education establish or hold. One or more, whatever is needed, workshops on safety issues.
So again, reason why I suggested the retreat, because you're gonna have to determine at the retreat.
What's going on?
What's gonna be on the calendar workshops that you already have, so that way we could properly notice those. Again, I'm just, just a suggestion.
Right. Okay, so I can amend that to say I moved that we.
Well, you have a current motion on the.
Yeah, but I made an amendment to.
Amendment to your motion?
Well, an amendment to his motion. Okay, yeah.
Maybe you can.
Right, so I can, okay, so, I move to amend it to, to. Indicate that the school board, that the, the safety issue is going to be workshop topic, topic or topics. And it will be determined at the board retreat.
It requires a second.
It does require a second.
Is there a second?
Yes, Martin Wilson. Martin Wilson.
There's a second from Mister Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens, please call, we'll call the.
Ms. English win?
No.
Mister Leonard?
No.
Ms. Sander?
Ms. Stevens, I, I, can we please take a pause, I believe we were out of order, uh, there's a point of order, so I just wanna make sure that we're, we're following Robert's rules, so. And please correct me if I'm wrong, we had a motion on the table, we had an amendment, which was motioned and seconded. I had asked for discussion, and then, so following the discussion, there was none. On the amendment, and then we're taking a vote on the amendment to the motion.
Correct.
Now, I have a question, so. If we are voting to. Make it a workshop or to discuss it at the board retreat, does that mean that we are also voting not to make it a committee? Or is that some, is that a separate motion?
The separate.
That's a separate.
Okay, got it, okay.
So the, so the motion on the table is to postpone the creation of the committee to. The workshop, so we can discuss it there, is that correct? To postpone this motion to the work to.
No, no.
Say, repeat the motion again, my apologies.
Okay, I was moving that, that, the, that the, this board, um. Hold. Let me get my thoughts together, that this board hold workshops on the safety issues. On safety issues within Red Clay, and we will determine when those are, or how many and when those are at our retreat in July.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Stevens, please call, we'll call the.
Ms. English win?
Yes.
Mister Leonard?
No.
Ms. Sander?
Abstain.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes. Yes.
Wilson, I'm mute.
I haven't touched anything.
Mister Wilson?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. My vote is yes.
I'm gonna vote no.
Three yes, two no, one abstain, motion ca- passes.
So now we move back to the original motion, so I do have some comments, um, I, 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 I think I'm hearing a lot of different things. And I like a lot of the different ideas that are circulating. I love the idea of having a town hall, um, as recommended by Ms. Thompson. I think that certainly needs to be there. Um, I'm definitely not here to give any comments and I didn't hinder any of the safety work. I certainly acknowledge a lot of the safety, um, concerns and issues. I think really the dialogue here is to, to how to best proceed about how we're gonna hold that conversation and dialogue. Um, with the original charge statement that was provided, um, there, I definitely had, uh, some concerns. Uh, about the focus, about the clarity of it. Um, there was no mandatory deliverables, no goals, no action plans, no requirements. Uh, in terms of board policy, um, no stated measures on how many times they would meet, no clarity on who would be chair. So there were some unanswered questions, I know that this is the second revised version, um. I, 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 I would like to see a little bit more, uh, from this, a- and some clarity on this, that way. We have, we, we really have to be precise and specific on what the ask is. And I'm not sure that this current language accomplishes that. Uh, there's a lot of unanswered questions on what is it that the board is looking for, and as is for Doctor Green. He, for him to be able to, to deliver what it is that the board wants to do or wants to accomplish. There's a lot of unknowns and per this, the items that I outlined. That just aren't answered with this. Now, I, 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 I can see that there were some amendments here about adding. Who specifically will be on it, but again, to some of the other things that I, that I just listed off. I think we need to have a little bit more dialogue, so I am going to amend this motion, um, that we. Give this a little bit more time and a little bit more clarity, um, and kind of work to smooth out some of the language of this. So that we can be really clear with Doctor Green and work with him and his administration as to what is it we want to do and accomplish specifically. And what medium we want to do it in, um, and kind of include, you know, some of the other ideas. You know, like town halls and, and, and workshops and so forth. So I'm going to actually amend the motion that we postpone it until we can have a better sit-down conversation. Um, at the retreat and make this a retreat topic so that we can all discuss this together at length.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Kathy Thompson.
Is there any discussion?
Um, so I think that. We've heard a lot of, like, as you said, great ideas about, um, what we can do as far as the safety committee is concerned. I know that there's a lot going on in the district, we've heard from constituents, me personally, um. My family has dealt with bullying, um, in particular in the district, so something does need to be done. Um, I know that firsthand, um, I think that I am kinda thrilled about all the ideas that we've heard. Um, tonight about possibilities, um, a town hall would be great, I think that, um. When I think about what, the safety issues that we faced in the district, that is going to take a collective. Effort, like, we need to connect, we need to engage the families, and we need to find out. You know, because we have to work together, it's not just something that we are going to be charged with alone, um, and so. I am in, in favor of the committee, once we fine-tune the charge. But I also am in favor of a town hall and workshops to get feedback from the community so that we can do it. The most effective way for it to be successful, not just for myself, but for us as a board and for the families, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Any other comments?
No, I, again, my only advisement to the board was to do just that. Again, I don't disagree, I mean, safety is our top priority for every child that enters our school building, and what we're seeing. Um, again, not only is it district, is what many folks are seeing nationally. Um, that's not to be dismissive of, of what's going on, but it does. And will take a community and collective effort to address this issue. Um, you look at what happened just recently with a social media situation. Right across the line in Pennsylvania, where a group of middle schoolers, you know, took the identity of teachers and created fake TikTok pictures. Um, during our course of our last interviews around secondary administration. To a person during the interview, everyone talked about the impact of social media and what it's actually doing to increase behaviors in schools. We're seeing developmental delays in children who are experiencing things post-COVID. That middle schoolers are exhibiting behaviors that were typically in elementary school. We know a lot of families are dealing with, you know, displacement and homelessness and a lot of underlying, you know, social drivers and health factors. The only thing I'm just saying to the board is, we are collectively working to address these issues, we're serving on state committees. I just think it would behoove us to just be intentional about. Who and what we can control as a district, and then more importantly, where does that advocacy come out on behalf of the community at large? And maybe change some policies or different things to help inform the board. Because I think too often, when we do sit in committees, and I'm on enough of them, as the board knows. It gets frustrating because a lot of the work doesn't move beyond the committee. And then we kind of find ourselves in place rather than saying, you know, how are we strategically placing a town hall into this conversation? Because a town hall sounds good, but then what do you want to come out of it, and then just having people have an opportunity to air their grievances. I re- I, I most recently sat in one, and a lot of what people expect us or want us to discuss or talk about. May not necessarily be in, in the bandwidth of a school, a school district, um, it could require state policy change. So it's really just being intentional, um, and again, I don't disagree, the whole avenue around going from a. Board committee to a district committee was actually to do one of the things that we, we actually were able to pull off, which was the health, the community health and wellness fair. Because I think too often when we sit at a committee or sit at a table. Things don't go beyond us kind of pontificating on an issue, and like I said, we're writing national grants. Um, or trying to secure national funding to be able to address these community issues that by default, whether we like it or not. It falls on our lap, so the days, this is my twentieth year in administration, there, and there was a point in time where we could simply, simply say. This wasn't the school's responsibility, but we've seen more and more, it, it, it's our responsibility, right? We're putting wellness centers in elementary schools. So, again, I, I just wanted to say that, let's have just some intentional dialogues, so that I'm clear on what the board is asking. Not only me, but the district to be able to carry out to address these issues across.
Thank you, so, and I certainly concur with a lot of the sentiments shared around the table, um, I think we're all. Heading into the right direction in the sense that we're all kind of working collaboratively to get to the goals that we want to see, but. Um, and I'm certainly glad to be able to sit down, take a look at the, the, the language here. See how we can fine-tune it to making sure that we're really clear and concise, um, on the direction that we all want to head into. Um, I know we will get there, it will take some time, um, and looking forward to having some robust dialogue at the retreat. If the motion passes.
If there are motion on the table.
Yep, if the motion, yeah, any other comments, discussion? Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Ms. English win?
Yes.
And what is this for?
Mister Leonard?
So, what are we?
What's this for?
Yeah, I'm just sorry, what's the motion?
The, the motion is to, in light of all of the dialogue that we're having tonight. My motion was to amend the current motion of approving the safety committee. To having another round of discussion at the retreat, so we can fine-tune the details.
Of the charge.
Of the charge statement.
Okay, wait.
Ms. Stevens?
Ms. English win?
Yes.
Mister Leonard?
No.
Ms. Sander?
Wow, um. Abstain.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes. Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Four yes, one no, one abstain, motion passes.
Alright, final action item, action item H, it is the recommendation that the Red Clay Board of Education approved the submitted custodial contract for F Y twenty five through F Y twenty seven.
So moved, Kathy Thompson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English, the motion has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Stevens, please call the vote.
Engli- Ms. English win?
Yes.
Mister Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mister Wilson?
Yes, yes.
Mister Matthews?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens, does anything need to be removed from the consent items before we move along? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mister Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English, has been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We now move on to school board committee reports. First up, we have. Well, C F R C, in, in light of the presentation at length that we had, um, updating the community, um. Essentially on what C F R C discussed, um, that seems to have been covered.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add one thing, though, uh, Mister.
Certainly.
Matthews, the next meeting for the C F R C is September tenth, twenty twenty four, at six in a hybrid mode. In the district boardroom and on Zoom, and there's a meeting scheduled for next year that was also provided and will be posted on the website.
Excellent, thank you, um, Wilmington Learning Collaborative.
And there's really nothing to add there, Doctor Burgos did present at last month's meeting, and it was a preview to what actually took place at the June W L C D.
And the council retreat is supposed to be taking place on August twenty fifth, so.
July twenty.
July, July twenty fifth, sorry. Sorry.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. English. So we now move on to information items, um, there's some items in board docs, uh, for folks in the community, take a look at that. Um, and without further ado, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, is there a second?
Second, English.
Thank you, Ms. English, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone, motion carries.